Yes.
Call the October Vigo County Area Plan Commission meeting to order an A R O call, please.
Ryan Baker, Tammy Bolin.
President.
James Christman.
Here.
Mark Lincolnbeard.
Here.
John Collette. Jeff Ford. Norm Froderman.
Here.
Don Fulk.
Here.
John Hanley.
Here.
Marcus Mauer. Debbie May.
Here.
Ashley Strain. William Berdine.
Here.
Fred Wilson.
Would you have a forum, can I ask everybody to please stand for a question? Thank you. I assume everyone has had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from the previous meeting and the status report. Are there any corrections or comments on that?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I think Commissioner Schweitzer has some information he'd like to share with us on a non-agenda item.
Yep. Thank you guys for the opportunity to be here tonight. Happy Mark Lincolnbeard's on this board now, so I don't have to be here at seven o'clock at night anymore. Thank you, Mark. I want to make you guys aware of a situation in West Terre Haute that we have dealt with for going on the second year. The property is thirty-six-eleven West National Avenue. It is owned by a tree service, a man that owns a tree service. For one year and one month ago, the same property had so many byproducts, tree limbs, tree trunks, trees, I mean, the whole deal piled up along Highway forty going out of West Terre Haute, that he was crossing the county's right-of-way, because the county does own that now, to dump his tree products on his property. And in July of last year, that caught fire and was extremely taxing on Sugar Creek Township Fire Department. And again, Monday evening, he is again dumping a large amount of brush and debris on his property again, and it caught fire. Don't know how it caught fire. Nobody could figure that out yet. But it's extremely difficult for an already underfunded and undermanned or womaned fire department to have to act on something like this for three or four days when it's totally preventable. Working with Jared this morning, and hopefully our legal counsel in the commissioner's office, we're trying to find an area to where we can hold this gentleman accountable. The land is zoned agricultural, and there's a lot of gray area in there. He has a commercial business operating out of his home with several commercial trucks there. That's causing disturbance and a nuisance for the nearby property owners, and the brush compiling on his property is also a nuisance. You know, for the town of West Terre Haute, this is a big deal for them. The water, they had a water main that busted that same day, their pressure, two of them that busted that same day. Their water pressure was down and dwindled down to nothing, and it's a big deal for them. I mean, they're a small township that is doing everything it can to be great, but things like this set them back a lot. So, what I would like to propose to you guys, and working in partnership with you and potentially the Board of Zoning Appeals for the county, we would like to make an amendment to whatever code we can identify. Jared and I kind of worked on today, but didn't have the opportunity to get back with him, to find a way to hold them accountable. And it's unfortunate, because every other tree service in the community is doing everything the correct way. And we don't want to do anything to burden them at all, but the proper way should be, you take your debris and take it to the landfill, or people such as McGuire Excavating or other places might have a place for them to dump for twenty-five bucks a truckload. You shouldn't be able to skirt that and dump that on your property in a residential neighborhood, as far as I'm concerned. There are landowners here tonight that may be here about something else, don't know, but they live within, you know, fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred feet of the property, and you can literally, you could feel the heat from that property from that area, and you can still smell the smoke today. This is one hundred percent preventable. I just am having, and you know, I'm going to take responsibility for the fire back in July. I think probably I dropped the ball back then. We pursued it a little bit, but I did find him, and I thought that would be enough to skirt him from potentially making the same mistake again, but apparently wasn't. So this time, we're going to make sure we take care of this problem. So whether that's through you, whether it's through the Board of Zoning Appeals, or whether that's something the county commissioners can do, I believe Mike, Mark, and I are ready to make something happen. So just wanted to put this on your radar and make you aware of this, that it's going to be coming, hopefully by next month, whether that's BZA or you guys, to make this change. So, we will continue to work with Jared, our legal counsel, Harry Modestet, maybe even Ms. Rettling, if necessary, and we'll get something in front of you. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I just want to make you aware of it.
Okay. If I have any questions?
No questions, but I wanted your efforts to determine this.
Aye, appreciate it.
Goes to be on the front of the carpet. You think fog is bad, but when you get that smoke there, it comes in, it went out. It, you know, takes your lungs, your eyes, water. You know, you get through fog, it won't stop, but that smoke, you've got to try to get out of that, so.
Yeah.
Yes, I thank you for every input.
And Jim, it was also, also pretty, Richard's going to hit me. It's pretty taxing, not only on Sugar Creek, but I believe there were ten-plus tankers that night delivering water back and forth from township fire departments across the county. So it's a burden on everybody, and it's preventable one hundred percent, so. Yeah. Tammy, do you have something?
Is it also accurate information that the highway was shut down for a period of time?
Yeah, we did, yeah. Vigo County Central Dispatch called me and the Highway Department around eleven fifteen. The only night I set my phone on my carpet instead of all my things, I didn't hear it ringing. Chief Scott made sure I knew about it at one, two, or three o'clock in the morning. So, yeah, we shut the highway down as well.
Do you guys have any concern, or have you heard anything to the tune that maybe he's dumping other things there, accelerants or?
No, it's cool.
Just debris?
W T H I actually called the landowner today, and he said he was building a wildlife habitat. So, you know, it's just so frustrating.
It's a big issue, it's a big concern.
It's huge, yeah. And we don't want to penalize any other tree company. We just want to make sure it's fair across the board. You know, if they're having to pay the fees to go to the landfill and dispose of their property, and a commercial business is operating on their home land, it's something that we need to fix.
It's hard to run in that kind of business.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
Thank you for the time, Mr.
Aye. Executive Director's Report.
Good evening. I also would like to thank Commissioner Schweitzer for appearing here this evening, speaking on that matter, briefing you so that I don't have to. He did a much more eloquent job than what I would have on such short notice. Couple things. First off, you'll notice some handouts there in front of you, two that we will come to later in the agenda. The first one I will draw your attention to is a picture that was submitted to us and actually captured from Lost Creek Elementary Newsletter that ties in with the Director's Report this month. That was one of the fifth three field classes that Penny and I happened to speak to. And I also would like to officially welcome to the Area Plan Commissioner Ashley Strain from West Terre Haute. We'd like to thank her for volunteering her time and representing that town on our board.
Anything?
Anything?
My Assistant Director's Report is mostly about the Indiana Association of Flood Plains and Stormwater Management Conference that I went to this month. All the information from that conference is in that packet. One of the main things they focused on was elevation certificates. So if there are any surveyors in here that I didn't get an email to, let me know. They are having a class in November on elevation certificates, and I think that's something that's really important for everyone to attend. And it's virtual. Also, you can see, one of the classes I took was really cool, and I was certified on this model that represents flood plains. And so now, as a county, we can check it out from D N R and use it for community outreach projects. I thought that was kind of cool.
Anyone on the commission have any questions for the Director or Assistant Director? Not all entertain a motion on their reports.
Agreed.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. There were no plans submitted this previous month for administrative approval, so we'll move on to new business, city rezonings, docket number eighty-three, special ordinance number thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-three, eighteen hundred, South Twenty-Fifth Street, from an R-one to an R-one plan development.
The owner is Jenny Jones Realty LLC. Proposed use is a real estate business with a residential section. Proposed zoning is R-one plan development. Current zoning is R-one single-family residence district. It's located at eighteen hundred, South Twenty-Fifth Street, on the corner of Twenty-Fifth Street in Ohio and Idaho. It has C-two to the north and west, and R-one to the east and south. Plan developments are uses that may be permitted under certain circumstances that are not a permitted use in the zone district where said plan development is proposed. A plan development is a floating zone. Before a plan development can be considered, the petitioner must show proof of one of the following unique circumstances, that the petitioner has a hardship due to the physical characteristics of the land, a hardship due to the improvements on the land, hardship due to adjacent scattered incompatible uses, a hardship due to the general deterioration of the neighborhood, or a parcel located near a district boundary line. When it is determined by the Area Plan Commission and the City Council that a hardship does exist, a plan development of certain uses may be approved for any zone law. However, it must be determined that said proposed uses, if approved, will be in the public's interest, and that substantial justice will be done for that neighborhood. Approval of said proposed uses shall not have the intent of nullifying the purpose of the zoning regulations. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property to R-one plan development for a real estate business with a residential section. The petitioner intends to have two rooms on the first floor and a potential, two offices, office rooms on the first floor, and a potential apartment in the back. The area is mixed-use with residential and commercial along Twenty-Fifth Street. The fence on the north side of the property line is located in the right-of-way. It will need to be moved to the property line. The petitioner may potentially need parking relating variances if engineering determines they are necessary. The Department of Engineering stated that the intended use of the property and a real estate office would not alter the neighborhood's characteristics. Staff offers a favorable recommendation for the petition with the following conditions, a site plan and parking approval by the Department of Engineering.
Is the petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add to the staff report?
I'm actually part of your panel.
I'm hard of speaking, so that works real well. Is there anything you'd like to add to the staff report? Certainly welcome to, if you want to.
I'm just like, I feel like we both nod, and it's hard to be makers, for a private business, and we want to go through the necessary steps to get here.
Okay. Okay. Anyone on the commission have any questions? Anyone here in attendance speaking in opposition to this proposal? Not all entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, minor, primary, secondary, docket number eighty, file number forty-six, two thousand twenty-three, Elliott Farms subdivisions.
The property has frontage along East Park Avenue, commonly associated with nineteen-eighteen East Park Avenue, three point oh seven acres. The surveyor is Mr. Keller. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the parent tract to five acres to remove the house and garage from the remaining structures. We did receive approval from the Health Department. Public sewer is available, and connection will be required. Public water is not available. It's not in the flood zone. The lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. East Park Avenue is considered a local-level roadway at this location. Stormwater drainage will not be required with a minor subdivision. An existing drive, now easement, will serve both lots. It's unclear if a single well serves both lots. If so, then an easement for access to the well may be needed and is recommended. Plant is, of course, contingent upon being recorded in ninety days. We offered a favorable with the following conditions, Health Department approval, which it has received. We did receive two letters of remonstrance. Those are there and placed in front of you as handouts. Both of them citing similar concerns, not over the subdivision, so much as if there's a potential rezoning in the future, to commercial for the existing business. And then also, the one letter raised the issue of possibly a signage at that location.
Okay. Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to add?
No, other than the fact that the business has been there. It's a family business. There's not a ton of traffic in and out of there. It's by appointment only. And we haven't decided whether we want to rezonate yet. Only family employees working there until we decide to grow, if we do, that we do the subdivision at that time.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the client question? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this? Not all entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, minor, primary, secondary, docket number eighty-one, file number forty-seven, two thousand twenty-three, Sycamore Run subdivision.
The property has frontage along East Oregon Church Road, commonly associated with fifty-nine-fifty East Oregon Church Road, two new lots totaling eight point seven eight acres. The surveyor is Mr. Tolles. The applicant is requesting to subdivide eight point seven eight acres into two lots for the stated use of residential. We did receive word from the Health Department. It has been approved. Public sewer is not available. Septic systems must be utilized. Public water is available. Indiana American does not serve this location. Sullivan Vigo Rural Water may be the provider. It's not in the flood zone. The lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. East Oregon Church is a secondary collector-level roadway with proposed right-of-way of sixty feet. Stormwater drainage is not required with minor subdivisions. A single drive, now easement, again, will serve both lots, and the approval of this plant is contingent upon being recorded in ninety days. We offered a favorable with the only condition a road cut permit if needed.
Okay. Matt, do you have anything you wanted to add? Okay. Any questions about this? Matt can answer. Anyone here speaking in opposition to this proposal? Not all entertain a motion.
So we approve.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, minor, primary, secondary, docket number eighty-four, file number forty-nine, two thousand twenty-three, Sullivan, one-eight-eight-one.
The property has frontage along U S High one fifty and is commonly associated with forty-three twenty-five, sixteen point four four acres, the surveyor is Mr. Rhodes. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the sixteen point four four acres into three lots. Lot A will contain the existing homestead. Health Department has approved. We did receive that. Public sewer is not available. Septic systems must be utilized. Public water is available. It's not in the flood zone. The lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. U S High one fifty is a rural arterial roadway with proposed roadway right width of one hundred feet. Stormwater drainage is not required with the minor subdivision. A plant at easement along the north of the tract A and B will serve to access tracks B and C. The plant is, of course, contingent upon being recorded within ninety days. We offered a favorable with the only condition being a road cut permit if needed.
Is the petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add?
No, we do have a permit for the mall.
Okay. All right. Any questions from anyone on the client question? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this? Not all entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, major, primary, secondary, docket number eighty-two, file number forty-eight, two thousand twenty-three, Regan One Lot Subdivision.
The property is on the east side of Riley Road, being commonly associated with thirty-seven-ten Riley Road. The parent tract is six acres, the surveyor is Mr. Tolles. The request is to subdivide the parent tract to allow for residential development, and existing home is on the remainder. We're still pending from the Health Department. Sanitary sewer is not available. Public water is available. Indiana American does not serve this location. And it's not in the flood zone. The lot meets the minimum lot size requirement. Riley Road is considered a secondary arterial road with a proposed right-of-way of eighty feet. Stormwater drainage is typically required with major subdivisions. This is a major subdivision due to the number of lots being divided from the original parent tract. Given the size and proposed use, staff would recommend a waiver of the major subdivision requirements in favor of the minor subdivision requirements. So we offered a favorable on a primary and secondary with the following conditions of road cut permit if needed, and it be recorded within ninety days.
Matt, do you have anything you'd add to this? Any questions about this? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this? Not all entertain a motion.
Motion for approval.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under county rezonings, new business, docket number eighty-five, U Z O number thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, sixty-six twenty-one, and sixty-six twenty-three, North Thirty-Sixth Street.
The property owner is Raymond and Barbara Stoffer, and Mr. Shagley, you're representing them? Okay. The primary, the proposed use is primary residence with rental duplex. It is currently zoned R-one single-family district. It is, their proposed zoning, R-three multifamily residential district, and the common address, sixty-six twenty-three North Thirty-Sixth Street. This area's use is primarily suburban residential with a low development priority. The surrounding uses are all R-one single-family residential. Okay. The petitioner is requesting rezoning of the property to R-three multifamily to allow the sale of the property. The original home construction, according to the assessor's office, was in nineteen forty-five, and the detached garage was converted to a dwelling in nineteen seventy-four. If just those two structures existed, the property would enjoy a legal non-conforming status. However, at some point, the owners remodeled the second dwelling, adding a third dwelling. No permits were issued for the third dwelling. Once the third dwelling was constructed, the property was altered and lost legal non-conforming status. As it currently exists, the property is illegal non-conforming. Consequently, the banks will not loan on the property, and the owners are unable to sell, until which point the property is brought into compliance. The petitioner will need variances to make this work, border zoning approvals for three different variances, five feet from the twenty-five-foot front yard setback, an unknown distance from the required fifteen-foot per-building side yard setback, as well as a type B buffer and landscaping plan. This may be about the closest example to a spot zoning staff has seen in some time. A spot zoning consists, if the area is small in comparison, or compared to districts surrounding the parcel in question, the new district allows land uses inconsistent with those allowed in vicinity. The spot zone would confer a special benefit on the individual property owner not commonly enjoyed by the owners of similar property, the existence of the spot zone conflicts with the policies in the text of the master plan, and the future land use map. Now, in Indiana, spot zoning is not illegal, per se. If the zoning action bears a rational relation to the public health, safety, morals, convenience, or general welfare, the key distinction is that the spot zoning is not pursuant to the police power when it fails to further the public interest. Staff has received remonstrance from just one call from an adjoining neighbor. That person just expressed concern over renters in general. Public sewer and water are available. This is certainly not a straightforward and easy recommendation. Allowing the rezoning would be rewarding blatant non-compliance with established permitting policies in the county. In addition, the issue of spot zoning and legality thereof should be weighed heavily. Alternatively, had it not been for the lending institution, we would not have been made aware of the issue. It's not our place to derive policy from outside institutional influence. Nevertheless, we are appreciative of those same institutions in assisting us and ensuring that the enacted regulations are upheld. To bring the property into compliance, the owners would convert, could convert the existing detached structure back into a non-livable structure, or they could gain approval of the rezoning. Even with the zoning approval, there's no guarantee that the additional dwelling will meet current residential building code. So staff is sympathetic to the situation in which the property owners find themselves. However, had they followed established permitting procedures, they wouldn't be in this situation. Utilizing the U Z O as a means to subvert proper permitting should not be encouraged. Approval of this rezoning will come with the following conditions, border zoning appeals for those variances as mentioned above. Both dwellings will need to be inspected, and really, not so concerned over the main home, rather more so the garage that was converted by the building commissioner, and found to be compliant with Indiana residential building code.
Mr. Shagley?
Good evening, Mr. Acting President, fellow members of the commission. My name's Richard Shagley. I'm with the Law Firm of Wright, Shagley and Lowry. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of not only the petitioner, Jamie Hashman, but the property owners, Barbara and Ray Stoffer. As you heard from Jared, this property is currently zoned R-one due to some improvements that were made to the property, and with, as we are aware, I think this is probably my sixth or seventh rezoning due to a bank requirement. I think this is going to be a trend going forward. The financial institutions won't loan on properties that aren't zoning, in zoning, in the proper zoning. As a result, the owners are here tonight asking this property rezoned R-three. You know, I think Jared made some good points. This, and also, there is a pending variance, or the requested variances by the Area Plan Office. Those will be heard next week. The potential buyer will be an owner occupied, and they do intend to rent out the property. These improvements, this isn't, in the residential area, this isn't, it is visible from neighbors. These improvements were done years ago, and the, I'm not aware of any complaints that were filed with the Building Inspecting Office, with the Engineers Office, with Jared's Office. At no point did anyone complain about this until this property was recently on the market, and the adjoining property owner is now complaining about the potential renters. The reality is, there have been no complaints until just recently. This has been a, has not been troublesome for the neighborhood, and we have no reason to believe going forward will be troublesome. This is a nice piece of property. There has been a massive, beautiful kitchen remodel, which is, I imagine, some of the desire to pick up this piece of property. This piece of property has also been used in the past for a commercial side. And again, during that time period, at no point did any neighbors complain about the activities at this property. So we are kind of suspect to why all of a sudden they're complaining now. A common reason for that is that they tried to buy it, and they couldn't buy it. That's a very common motivation behind a new complaint. But ultimately, there haven't been any complaints. I do believe there are some remonstrance here this evening, but at no time prior to this evening has anyone ever complained about the activities going on at this property, nor do we intend it for it to change going forward. I'd be happy answering questions you may have.
Any questions from anyone on the client question?
Yes, sir.
So, what has to mean, what's, Jared, what's your opinion on this?
I can answer that, Jared. It's a favorable recommendation. It's in your packet.
I did not put favorable or unfavorable on that. I left it for you to decide. When it weighs into legalities, I am not always confident in making a straightforward recommendation.
For residential, please, does it need state approval to build, or by the code, etc.?
If it were new, yes.
If it was new?
It would require homeland security and state releases, yes.
So, so this property, because it's in the process of being sold, it has been inspected. During that inspection period, there was determined a outlet was too close to a faucet, and that has been the buyers' well, that I believe that the corrections were made to bring it into code. So it has been inspected during the course of the sale, and at no time did any other code violations based upon the construction it has performed come into question.
So the second house has been rented in the past, and they plan to rent it again?
Yeah. And I believe the second part is also used for the photographic business for a time period as well. Hollywood, Hollywood Studios, Hollywood Hicks, not Studios. So even during the time it was used for a commercial, there has been no complaints in any county office down the road.
Well, it's really a unique R-three in that there are two structures. It's a duplex and a single house, is that right? Or a garage that's being lived in? I mean, it's not a, it's not a apartment building.
Correct.
Which is, makes it even weirder.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone on the client question?
We'd prefer more unique.
Unique. What did I say, weird?
Weirder. Just for the record.
I'll give you unique.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this proposal? Come on up and give us your name and address. I'm New York.
My name is Jason Horn. I'm a neighbor that is most affected by the weather. It's a garage, and four years in Vegas. Last eleven years, and five of the years, I've never had had it put there. I don't think it's been able to. I don't think it's going to be able to.
Okay.
What is the proof, the property value, or property tax, where there's no mark of deed of ownership? They have done everything wrong with this property, uh, now, so.
Okay.
I have this here, the neighbor.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, bring it on up. Thank you. Go ahead. Could you come up to the microphone, please? Just so we can hear you.
I am not directly located near the property, but I've lived in the neighborhood my whole life, and I'm aware of the things that you said as far as them converting this. It was a barn, and they converted it into an apartment, and there has been a lot of undesirable traffic with the renters that were there. My main concern is that keeping our neighborhood safe and our property values. So I'm opposed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Come on up.
My name is Louis Ling. I live at six-six-three-six, North Thirty-Sixth Street. I noticed that you said there was water available on the property. It is not city water, it is well water. I want to make that clear. The apartment above, on top, only has one door, so if there's a fire, if it's in the front of the apartment, those people will not be able to get out of that apartment. There, the lady that was living in there was supposedly Barbara's daughter, okay? And, which I've later found out was not her daughter, since she kicked her out. And then they had the landscaper living in there. The landscaper was noticed in neighbor's property on several occasions, because it's too tight in there, shouldn't be there. They don't have the parking area, they don't have the ingress negress to be getting in and out of there. The fire department will have a hard time because of the trees that are located in there. So I am very much in opposition. From what I've read, it will raise our property taxes and will lower our property values. That is not why I've moved into that neighborhood. And I moved in there two thousand eight. As far as the business she had in there, she may have had one or two customers a month. Not a big deal for the photo studio. I even toured the photo studio, she gave me a tour of it, but she had no business. Yeah, she wasn't really making any money from it. So, that is why there has been no complaint there. There's, the other one was, like I said, supposedly her daughter lived there, so nobody had a complaint there. I just want to let you know I am very much opposed to it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep, one more. Sure, come on up.
So I was interested in this property as a place for us to live, and to bring my family there, and to have great renters. I already have a property with two tenants. We do a very thorough screening. We do not allow anybody with a record. I would not allow anybody to live there that I wouldn't feel comfortable living next to myself, so we will be very selective on who would live there. We do have plans to make some major renovations to the inside of it, to fix it up, because we want to attract better tenants. We don't want to attract anybody that will be on drugs or anything like that. We are going to make renovations as far as making the driveway bigger, the gravel. We've made allotted spots for parking. So I just wanted the neighbors, I guess, to know that that is the plan. It's not like I'm planning to rent this out to a bunch of people. I want to live in a safe neighborhood as well, so I would not allow somebody else to come in there that would danger me and my family.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Shagley?
Thank you, Acting President, handling. You know, I've stood up here countless times, and I hear the property value argument. The reality is, in, in the countless times I've been up here, I've never been presented any evidence that supports that. And again, tonight, I'm being told that it'll affect the property values, but no evidence is being presented to do that. But, what we did just hear is from the potential buyer that they intend to not only live there, but make the improvements that satisfied Mr. Lane's issues. And I must point out that Mr. Lane moved in, and this was already existing, and yet he chose to live in this area, which tells me that this is a nice area. And, and now, all these neighbors are, just heard that not only are they going to have a new neighbor that's going to be owner-occupied, but they're going to make improvements, going to make it better. And with that, everybody rises. Will the taxes go up? If taxes go up, that means the assessed value goes up, that means the value goes up. So, no one likes for their taxes to go up, but that just means that they did something right, and they purchased something, and the value goes up. So I don't, I don't anticipate this hurting the property values, nor have I heard any evidence that suggests otherwise. Mr. Barnes made reference to people on meth. Again, there's no record of any police being called out for any meth-related incidents, and you would think if people knew there was meth going on, a neighbor would at least anonymously call to make a complaint and have the police come out. And that has not happened. So I'm not too sure the validity of those, of those comments. But, but the reality is, and as Jared pointed out, this is something that was done years ago. This is a cleanup because of bank regulations, and what we're asking for is that this property be rezoned to what it has been for the last twenty or so years, and that is R-three. I'd be happy answering questions you may have.
Any questions from the client? Yes.
Yeah, that.
Hold on, just saying. Go ahead and come up if you got something you want to say.
What he was saying was that my daughter did live there for seven years, and yes, we did kick her out because she was doing drugs. And so, we wouldn't, we wouldn't.
You said because she what?
She was, yes. That's why we kicked her out. And it is my daughter, and she went down to Kentucky to live with her father. So it's something that we wouldn't have put up with. The improvements that were made on the apartments were done before we ever bought the property, in nineteen eighty, or nineteen ninety-something. So we didn't have anything to do with the apartments. We, we bought it like that, and then we added on to the main structure, main structure, and we added on at least a hundred thousand dollars to it. And we've done nothing but improve the property.
Okay.
As Barbara mentioned, and, and as Jared mentioned in his report, you know, this is a unfortunate situation. Barbara and her husband bought this as it is, and if we had today's requirements in the banking institution, this would have been cleaned up forty years ago. What, that's right, thirty years ago. Unfortunately, at that time, it was a different time, but today's regulations, we have to do a cleanup that should have been done way long ago.
Okay. I think we got one more, one more time, man.
I just have a question. In your explanation in the beginning of this, was I right in understanding that if something like this were asked for approval in this neighborhood, that it would not be approved if it was a new structure?
They would have to go through the same rezoning process.
Okay. I guess my point being, if the proper channels had to be gone through for R-three zoning, they were not in the past with the changes that were made to the property, and I guess if it wouldn't be approved for a new structure, I don't see why it should be approved for an existing structure. Thank you.
I think what he was saying, I don't want the words in his mouth, but I, I believe what he was saying is that normally, R-threes are for multi-multi-family apartment buildings. If that had been the case, if somebody had come to rezonate R-three, we probably may have rezoned it, but then they would have had to go to Homeland Security and go through all of that. That's what got bypassed, and which is why it's, Richard says, unique, because it's really not. It's, it's a duplex and a garage, so it's, it's unique in a lot of ways, but I think that was what you were saying, wasn't it?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for explaining.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir. I can address that if you like. Okay. Let me just run through this, Richard, and then you can comment again. Bill wanted me to read part of Jared's report, says allowing the rezoning would be rewarding blatant non-compliance with established permitting policies in the county, which is, which is accurate. My, my personal assessment of what I'm hearing tonight is, is that in, not in this particular instance, but we've had these situations before, that the, the reward would be to the people that are selling and leaving, and, and the community is being rewarded by a new, new owner that's going to come in and probably resolve all these problems. I, I, it comes to mind some Farrington Grove issues with, with people that have wanted to rezonate, do something really good, and the people were opposed to it because what had been going on for the last twenty years was really bad.
Right.
And we would be remiss if we denied something that used to be really bad.
Bless you.
If it has an opportunity to be really good. That's my personal take on what I'm hearing.
The other thing I made.
And I only got that when she came up and told us.
Well, the other thing, too, is if, if they did these renovations last summer, and then were trying to come here, but the current owners didn't do the renovations, they bought it as-is, they've been using it for over thirty years in that situation, there's been no complaints felt, so apparently, no one's had any issues with it. People, most of these people probably have moved in to this area, wouldn't like that, so it wasn't a problem for them to not move in. We are simply here because of change of bank regulations, because the current owner, because of something they purchased in its current state, now requires to be properly rezoned to R-three. This is, we're not rewarding the current owners, as you stated, Mr. Hanley, we're really rewarding the buyers and the fellow residents, because it's, it's an improvement to the, to the community, in my.
I didn't say you reward, Jared did. I just read it.
Well, you can make an argument that you said it.
I was actually arguing in favor of what you were trying to get.
Yeah.
Certainly unique.
So, since this second structure, it's never been, there was never a billing permit applied for?
Correct.
Okay, so it would have to be inspected by the building inspector to bring it up to code?
Yes, I, I think it would be, I don't know. It would be a concern of ours to, to begin permitting residences to be habitable, deemed habitable, if they're unsafe. I mean, there's a liability there. So i-if this were to receive a favorable recommendation and then go on to be approved, one of the conditions of the approval would be, would have to demonstrate that it is a safe, habitable structure.
It's awful long. I only saw two electric meters, which, of course, now you may need two for the two R-one that is though. Yeah, because R-three, you need to require another meter there if you get it. I know you're not going to put it in, if you still get R-three.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
It's probably there. The picture I took was illustrative, just to demonstrate that there are, in fact, two units in the accessory structure in the garage. I, I did not look for, or take a picture of the third electric meter that would have been on the main home.
As far as the inspection goes, that's a acceptable requirement, and as I mentioned during my earlier presentation, the property was inspected prior to the sale, so the buyers and sellers are well aware of, of what's being transacted here, so.
I guess the question that I might ask Jared, Ellen, might help us move down the road here. If not, what?
If not, then they have to convert the accessory structure back into a non-habitable structure.
Whether they sell it or not, because it's illegal? Is that what you're, is that what you're saying? I mean, there could be enforcement?
We don't catch people to tell it on themselves. So if, if we were to decline to rezonate the property and the sale fell through, then they would have to, they could leave it as-is, but would face the same issue when they were to try and sell it, or if they were to try and sell it again.
I ask that question because I think that leaving it as it is would be less powerful to the neighbors than what we're proposing. It sounded like to me, the complaints that I heard were all by the current owners, not the, the owner. Yep.
There's no current language in the county's code as to the maximum number of residents at a, at a location.
Is the garage that has two units in it?
Yeah, it has one. Okay.
Okay.
Unique, I think, is the term you're looking for.
Unique, because I like that. I like that.
But really, in all seriousness, this isn't unique. This is a situation where the current owners purchased a property that wasn't conforming thirty years ago. They've been using it with no complaints until tonight, and it wasn't until the change of banking regulations that they're here. Like we've been, like I've mentioned before, this is probably my sixth or seventh time doing a cleanup and making sure the property is properly zoned going forward.
I think one of your clients would like to say one more thing. Go ahead, come on up. We won't be able to hear you if you don't.
I was just going to say the duplex, that property, that piece of house, that was there before the original house. I looked at the dates, they were built, so that was the original structure. It is eight hundred square feet, a feet per unit, so it is fairly bigger than the average apartment, even if you were to go to the efficiency or one bedroom. So I just wanted to clarify on that part.
There's also a unicorn farm in back to kind of go with the uniqueness feature.
You may want to look at what kind, which is a family there. It could be four, you know, you know, a student's effect. There's a, what, what kind?
Yeah.
And, uh, it looks like the land, if they wanted to, yeah, it looked like that. They had more than enough land there.
It's an acre, it's just about an acre.
That would not like to land.
Yeah. The size is not an issue. The size is not an issue. The size is not an issue, yeah. The, the issue...
That's for parking, they're not talking about parking, off the street parking.
The, the issue we're talking about tonight is the fact that when the current owners bought the property, there weren't regulations in place to protect them from buying something non-conforming. Had the rules today been in place 30 years ago, we wouldn't be here tonight. Had been rezoned then, and we wouldn't be here tonight. But unfortunately, 30, 35 years ago, it was a little looser. And we're also in a fortunate situation that the project we're talking about hasn't caused any trouble to anybody, and no one's complained to anybody until tonight.
One more, one more, then we're going to move on. Go ahead. Come up there, we can't hear you.
My name's Danny Ala. I live right across the street from the, from the property you're talking about and everything else. Thing I see is, we're kind of a good community and everything else, and we don't, we don't want to wish ill will on anybody and everything else. So when they're, when they were there and all this was happening and everything else, I can't remember, you, you remodeled the front there, what, six, seven years ago? Something like that? Yeah, which brought it over, over the actual setback that it should be. You know, it's closer to the road than what it should be, which that's not a problem and everything else, because we're good neighbors and everything. But now that the point is they're going to sell it and bring other people in, everything, and they're wanting to bring it into a rental property and everything else, and you're talking, well, there's enough acreage there for it and everything. Well, then if you make all that acreage into a parking lot, that really kind of depreciates the value, wouldn't you think? I mean, and if you don't make it all into a parking lot, then you're getting people parking off-street, whether there be two, three per apartment or whatever, they have friends over, then you've got more parking on those streets, kind of in our way. So it's not, it's not what they did or anything else, it's just what's coming up, is what I feel.
Okay.
Okay, that's all.
All right, thanks. What's your pleasure? We're done, we need to make some recommendations. Got a motion for a favorable recommendation.
Second?
Got a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Got one opposition?
Four.
No, that Bill Verdine opposed.
Thank you.
Motion still passes. Next item under County Rezoning Document Number 86 UZO, Number 14, 2023, 4016 Douglas Drive, from an A1 to an R1 single-family residential district.
The property owner, Quackback Properties LLC, the current's owning A1 agricultural, proposed owning R1 single-family residential with a proposed use of future residential subdivision. The property is located to the south of 412 West Douglas Drive and is currently commonly associated with 416 West Douglas Drive. This area is identified as suburban residential, with surrounding uses being agricultural to the north, and southwest and east are residential suburban. Development priority for this area is medium-intensity residential, and is surrounded by older platted lots and wooded agricultural land. Additional residential development in this area is encouraged by guidance, stating that over time densities should be encouraged to increase moderately to allow average densities of three to three and one-half households per acre. This rezoning will not alter the general characteristics of the neighborhood. R1, as in A1, only allows for one single-family home to be constructed. The petitioner has indicated that further division of the property may occur in the future. A major subdivision must be approved for any more than one new home. The availability of public utilities may limit the lot size and numbers. Issues such as access, drainage, infrastructure, and safety will all be addressed by the subdivision. Saft does offer a favorable recommendation for the rezoning request.
Is the petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add?
No.
Come up here so we can hear you, if you could. And before you go any further, I want to make sure that you're aware that right now, you're not building a subdivision, and you're not asking us to subdivide it to build a subdivision, you're asking us to make it R1 so you can build one house. That's, that's what we've got.
Okay.
Okay. Were you aware of that?
No.
That's, that's what's in front of us, which I was confused about, because you can build a house on A1. So I wasn't sure why we were here. What you have, what you are asking for is to rezone it, to do the same thing you can do without rezoning it.
Right. But we're going to be future subdividing.
Not by this action tonight. Not unless, not until you draw a subdivision and resubmit it as a primary, secondary, all kinds of stuff. I mean, we, we can, we can entertain zoning at R1, but you can't do anything more than you can do with an A1 today.
Right.
Eventually, it will need to be rezoned. Pardon the interruption.
Yes.
Yeah.
As of, yes, you are correct. As of today, it does not convey any additional buildable rights to the property.
Right. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it.
Okay.
You are now, okay, go ahead.
And you're, and you're here.
There's nothing wrong with zoning at R1.
It'll have to be done eventually, so...
Yeah, yeah, it has to be done eventually, because that's the future plan, is to put a subdivision in there, so...
Yeah, you will, you will come back to us with a, with a subdivision to, to make your primary...
Right, right, with our, we've got a line that's going to be handling all that, so...
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add now that I've...
No, no, I think you can take it, you can take care of that.
Okay. Any questions from the bank commissioner?
Dr. Richard Collins standing.
Is there anyone here that's speaking in opposition to this?
We all are.
You all are, that's what I figure. It's the last item on the agenda. You had to be interested in this.
This is out with the whole thing.
Okay. Well, one at a time, come on up.
My name is Carrie, and I live at 412 West Douglas Drive, which is right next to the field where they want to build a subdivision. When I called and talked to area planning, the lady I spoke to told me that he could build at least three houses right now. Everybody in the neighborhood is content with one house, possibly even three, but not a subdivision. Our main concerns is the safety for our children. Dave has pictures of our kids who ride their bikes, play basketball in the road. I mean, we live on a dead-end street for a reason. We live where there's not a bunch of houses for a reason. If we wanted to live in a subdivision, we would have moved to a subdivision, we would have moved into the middle of West Arhope. Like Mr. Schweitzer talked about earlier, our water supply is awful. We live at the end of the road, when everybody else along the road takes a shower, we're not taking one. There is no sewer in the field, or near the field, for them to build a house right now. We all have grinding stations. When there's no power, we get the aftermath of that as well. Like Mr. Schweitzer said, with the fire that happened, we had two water main lines break. What is that going to do to our water supply now? By adding a potential subdivision in the area. Our schools are overcrowded. They've literally turned closets into classrooms. There is no room for potential nine to 18, even more kids in the area. I do have a map of what our school district outline is for consolidated. The closing of West Vega Elementary was the worst thing ever, and I know that's not your guys' issue, but that created a huge overcrowding with our children in the school as it is. Our kids are not getting the education they need and deserve because of the overcrowding. And by building a house with potential, or subdivision with more kids, that's just going to be another bigger issue in the area. Traffic is awful. I mean, I have pictures, I have videos, watching these kids in the neighborhood trying to cross St. Clair just to go to school. They, the cars are non-stop. They start lining up at 7:20 in the morning. At 8:15, when school bell's ringing, they're finally leaving. Mr. Schweitzer, your children go to school there? I've seen you there several times dropping your kids off. You know the disaster. I'm sure you or your wife pick the kids up after school? People are lining up at 1:20 to pick up their kids from school. Our kids all have to walk home. They have to cross all that traffic to go home. When we come home, if it's during school hours or drop off a pickup, you're not getting home, because those people are not letting you through to get home. That is a huge issue for the safety of our children in the neighborhood.
Just for clarification, in case, in case everybody is arguing against a subdivision, that's not what they're asking.
Correct.
There will, there will come a time, it sounds like...
And we will be here to fight it then, too.
Yeah. And for the clarification, they can build one house the way it is right now, and if we, if the petitioner's reasonable, they can build one house.
And we are content with one house.
Yeah, that's all they can do until they come back.
However, the, the sign that was posted for this meeting was not even in the area. It was down the road. If one of the neighbors in the neighborhood was out riding their golf cart, we would have never known about this meeting until we got a letter, what, Thursday, Friday? Yeah. So signage would probably help being in the proper place as well.
I mean, I understand it was on the property?
No.
I took a picture of the location of the sign. The petitioner's responsible for placement.
Oh, okay.
The sign was on St. Clair, all the way down by the school, across from the playground. Mr. Schweitzer knows the area that I'm talking about. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the area. However, there is an easement to go in on that property that a way. There's also an easement off of Douglas Drive, so there technically should have been two signs, one for each easement, is how we all feel. Everybody in the neighborhood should have been made aware of it.
I think they were by mail, I think.
Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do, we do that.
Yeah. And we appreciate that.
Yeah.
But the sign, I mean, whoever put the sign up was trying to not get us here.
Okay, well, and again, I don't want to cut anybody short that wants to speak, but we're not, we're not working with a subdivision tonight.
If we're not rezoning for a subdivision, then why are we zoning if he can already build one out? Because that's what he asked to do?
That's what they asked, that's what they asked to do. Go ahead.
My name is Cameron Drake. I live on 4030 West Douglas Drive. I think the concern here is Quackback Properties clearly was not aware of why they were here. They thought they were building a subdivision, and if they haven't done their proper research to file correctly, what concern does that produce for the owners of the subdivision and what they're going to place in our, in our neighborhood? You know, I don't know, it just speaks volumes to me as to what amount of research they've done, that they don't even know why they're here tonight. So that's just my two cents, and then just agreeing with everything that's already previously been stated. We agree with one to two homes, but that, that's fine, but we don't want a subdivision.
And, and I think that time will come, and we'll have another meeting, and everybody will be here, and I'm happy to listen to any more comments, but I can't reiterate enough that they're not doing anything tonight. Apparently, they didn't know it, but that's not for me to make a judgment. If they want it to be rezoned R1, we can act on it, but they, they can still just build one house. They can build one house tomorrow without coming here.
I do have a...
Hold on a minute, just address us, so we don't...
I just asked if they were local and if they would be representing.
I know, that we don't, we don't like it when it doesn't work very well sometimes. It gets, it gets unique sometimes. Go ahead.
I would like to know who they talked to at the waterworks, because we do have a lot of, like they said, we do have a lot of areas where we cannot support any more load stations, and a lot of our, like, up by Larmour Hill, and that area does have very low water pressure, and it's something we're working for, but we currently struggle with them on water pressure as it is. So I am curious to know who, I, I work, literally work in the water office. I'm curious to know who they spoke to, that they're working with, have the water.
I, I'm happy for them to answer that, but once again, they don't, they can go out there and drill a well to build one house on an agricultural piece of ground, or they can do that on an R1. We're not talking about a subdivision tonight, and everybody's afraid we're talking about a subdivision, and I can guarantee you, someday we're going to be talking about a subdivision, but it's, but it's, but it's not tonight.
I mean, still, one house is going to put a load on our utility. And if, if he can drill a well, then why can't I drill one?
I'm just using that as an example. I, if, if you're here to suggest that somebody can't build a home on 40 acres, then I think, then I think you got a bad argument, but...
My argument is why you're paying, because if they're wanting to build one house, I think that they can do it now.
I don't know whether that's what they want or not.
Well, the reason they both ended changes R1, without, obviously, their intention that they've changed their mind, like you said, you're not doing it. But why would you change it from April or February, or September, at all, if you change it something? Other than favor them, who obviously does nothing...
It doesn't favor them, though.
It, it doesn't change anything for you or me.
Right.
If they want that, we can't have a petitioner not want it.
Right, but I'm saying, our argument is, why would you guys do that, I guess? Why change it if it's not, if it's fine now? It doesn't change anything.
Do we have a consensus here as to how you want to go on this?
Do they want to continue to do this?
I assume so.
Are, are you guys wanting to continue to apply for this to be our residential, R1? Or do you want to table this, or what?
We don't want to, we just won't.
What?
Just table it.
Second.
Motion is tabled. That's all I got.
Second.
Favor, aye.
Second.